Good evening, welcome to the Monday, March 20th City Council meeting. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Clatchy?
Here.
Alderman Harding?
Here.
Alderman Strach?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a proclamation honoring Mr. Ed Bus. Alderman Santee had requested to read this proclamation, so Alderman Santee, the floor's yours.
I appreciate everybody in the audience, the community. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello. And I wanted to kind of get up here and be close and be able to talk to you folks, but I had mentioned two weeks ago, previously spoke about your father, your grandfather, in regards to some of the things he did, and from that point, the rest of the Alderman elected officials and the mayors decided, hey, let's do a proclamation.
Hey Vic, speak up a little bit more.
Here we go. How's that? All right. Whereas the life of Ed Bus began in McHenry, where he resided his entire life, and whereas Ed Bus took over Bus Ford at age 18, and whereas Bus Ford served on the McHenry County Board for 25 years, and whereas Ed Bus was instrumental in the building of the Charles Miller Bridge, and whereas Ed Bus was honored by the McHenry Little League Association for being inducted into their Hall of Fame after serving 12 years on the Board and being a lifetime supporter of the Little League, and whereas Ed Bus was a strong supporter of the McHenry Country Club, winning 13 club championships, 13 senior championships, and serving on the County Board of Directors for 12 years. Now, therefore, city of McHenry, I do hereby recognize Ed Bus and the Bus Ford family for their hard work and their dedication to serving this community of the city of McHenry. Thank you very much. If I could have Ed, Bob, please.
Should we put that in the middle?
Yeah. Yeah. Hides is a high devil. High, high.
If anybody wants to take a picture.
Turn around this way.
There you go.
Any old.
One more.
One more.
For our neighborhood.
On behalf of the entire city staff and the council, our condolences are with you and your entire family and how much you've done in this community and how much Ed has really impacted the city of McHenry. I know Sue Lau is here, and I know Sue can definitely state more than I can, but you know, as much as has done and your family has done since I've been mayor here is absolutely amazing. So, thank you, on behalf of all of us.
Mayor.
Yes.
Hi. Real briefly, because we spoke about this with the Public Works Director, but also and some of the federal Aldermen here, I would like to just extend to the other elected officials that we have a discussion item put on agenda in the very near future for an honorable mention street sign for Mr. Ed Bus. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You can leave. You do not want to. Yeah, you do not want to stay here.
Run.
Run. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's pretend like this one, yeah. So I can say catch today, let's cut to the bar.
We promise we'll watch your video.
Yeah, right.
I thought you were here for my budget presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He's handicapped again. That guy's had too many surgeries. All right, moving on to the next agenda item is a proclamation for Arbor Day 2023. Alderman Miller is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Jett. So, McHenry proclaims, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by rindin' water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, enhance property values, and the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the city of McHenry has recognized, has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 28 consecutive years by the Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue in its tree-planting ways. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the city of McHenry and the city council do hereby proclaim April 28, 2003, as Arbor Day in the city and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support the protection of our trees and our woodlands. Further, we urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of future generations. That proclamation has been signed by our distinguished mayor, Wayne Jett Jr. Thank you.
That was really good. Good job, Sue. Thank you.
That deserves it.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you, Sue. Next item on the agenda is Meyer Lafarge Mining Update. Randy Willey's here. Floor's yours, sir.
Those are pretty tough acts to follow there. I wouldn't expect any applause here. Good evening. Randy Willey, I'm the manager of Land and Environment for, which was Lafarge Wholesome. We are changing our names again soon. Wholesome is going to be the new brand that we operate under. It's the Swiss parent company that actually acquired Meyer Material in 2006, then merged with Lafarge in 2015, and now the Lafarge name is being dropped. So, just if you keep along with the corporate names like I do, I'll be back next year, too. So, I'm just here to update you on the progress of our South Mine. I was here about six, seven weeks ago to discuss the North Mine, amended and restated, but I think it's probably fair to, probably the more important, more impactful side of the business is on the South Mine, so I'm going to ask Derek to go to the first slide. If you can see that, you'll see kind of an aerial photo of both sides of Route 120. The North Side was disturbed in the mid-2000s, but we'll be back over there shortly. But the South Mine really encompasses everything west of the elementary school and parcels B, C, D, and E. And you'll see in the center, there's our processing center that is used to store, stockpile, short gravels, weigh trucks going in and out onto 120. We're kind of pivoting all the way around that as we move about the mine. Those parcels were annexed in with the Miller family in 1988. Meyer acquired the Miller family's operations shortly thereafter, and then we actually added Parcels D and E to the larger scale of the South Mine. Most recently, that entire South Mine was amended annexation with new conditions, so we were allowed to process materials, extract materials through 2026. And now with the addition of the North Pit Reserves renewing, the processing center can stay open for an additional period of time to exhaust the North Pit. So that would be 2032. Next slide, please. So, if you look back at 2019, just as a big overview, we had probably seven or eight million tons remaining on the site, and it was divided between what we call the wet mining and the dry mining. The dry mining is the more intense use because there's a primary jaw crusher that's on the surface that the neighbors can probably hear on a quiet day. That's in the red cells marked A through E. And then the below-water mining, which will accompany the dry bank, or this will be the wet mining, is in UVWXYZ. So, we're working both ends to the middle, so to speak, to accomplish this before 2026. We're in Cells D and E right now, right up against the homes. You can go to the next slide, Derek. This is an aerial shot that I presented a year ago at this time, which would have been in the fall of 2021, which shows you pretty much how much dry bank material was remaining at the time. We were hoping if it was a busier season, we would have gotten through all the dry bank last year, but it wasn't to be. But you can see where most of the dry bank is actually directly adjacent to Glacier Ridge, and then it abuts a little bit on the Wood Creek end. You can see from the aerial that we were required to keep our primary crushing system greater than 500 feet from the property line, and that's pretty much in the center of the property there where the snow is. And we operate 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. I don't think we operate that late on any day. The 7:00 AM start is to keep quiet from the neighbors. And we need to operate on Saturdays periodically with work and just the way we balance things out. But we are allowed to run the processing center 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but that's pretty much off the northwest corner of the photograph, and we're a far distance away from any of the homes for those hours, and we can wash 24 hours a day. The setback zones that we're currently mining up against Glacier Ridge is 200 feet, and then there's a strip there that actually is owned by the Homeowners Association, including that 10-acre pile of woods there to the north. We mined up against that, and we've been restoring that as we've been going. Next slide, Derek. So this is an overview to last fall. We were still, it wasn't obviously winter yet, but you can see where the dry mining bank was probably cut in half, so this is where we're going to start this year. So you can see the remainder of the dry bank should be exhausted. If you notice from the other photo, the lake that's down at the, call it the southwest corner of the active area has gotten bigger as well. We like to blend the coarser aggregates from the dry bank along with the finer aggregates with the wet bank in order to balance out the materials that we sell. You can go to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit more in-depth about what we did in 2022. So this kind of shows you what we took out of the dry bank and then what we've taken out of the wet mining. We went a little bit deeper in that square lake and then started working along the edge of the areas we've filled. No stripping was done last year because we completed all the crap land stripping the year before, so we started out just like we will this year without any stripping work, which is somewhat of an intense use. But we will start at some point, starting to final grade areas that will be completely mined out this year. So, in 2022, we took a big chunk out of D and a little bit of E. We'll probably finish that up in this year. As we approach from the north, south, from the west, east, we're going to get closer to the neighbors before we get farther, but this is the last year we'd be doing that. And everything else we'll do is probably below water and very passive. So the next one is the extraction plan for 2023, which shows the dry bank had completely eroded. We could be done by Labor Day, depending on the type of season that's forecast, and then a lot of wet mining will take place after that. So the deadline to have dry bank mining completed was 2025, and we're for surely going to be early on that. The wet mining is a little bit slower process. We have a drag, a backhoe. The backhoe's reach is probably around 15, 16 feet, so that's probably as deep as the ponds will ever get. It may be shallower, just depends on where we hit clay. So they really just kind of fish it blindly into the water. But we are going to work as close as we can against the mine face with the end loaders to keep as much noise attenuation from bothering the neighbors. They still have to carry it 500 feet at the longest travel distance to get it to the primary crusher, but ultimately by the end of the year, the primary crusher will go away. You're probably going to have two backhoes trying to keep up with whatever production we need, but again, you won't have a lot of crunching of larger rock because everything below water is pretty fine. I'd say 90% fine materials. You can go to the next slide, which is a little bit more on the restoration piece. This year, and it'll probably be later, because we would need the dry bank to be completely exhausted before we can start filling in some of these nice high walls that we made for ourselves. The problem is, we had materials stacked piled in different areas, so we're kind of strategizing now as to, is it better to push a lot of it with a bulldozer, which would be a less expensive way of getting the dirt over, or do we have to load it and haul it, which probably doubles or triples the cost of moving the dirt? And we're also looking at possibly bringing in what they call clean fill. We get a permit from the EPA, which we've applied for, and because there's a housing subdivision across the street, they're digging basements, you're going to have a great place to take a short haul, and we could probably use it to make the slopes as flat as we can make them and vegetate them, and they get released as pasture land. The lakes get released from the state of Illinois, as reclaimed, and we're bonded with the city, we're bonded with the state, so it's our obligation and obviously our incentive to get everything done on time. The water body is a little bit more of a roll of the dice. We drilled several holes over the years to determine what we think the strata of sand and gravel is above and below water. It could be as big as 60 acres, it could be two or three different ponds with a little link in between them, just depending on how it goes. But ultimately, that's how Mother Nature left it, and that's how we'll take the material out. The last picture is just a summary page, kind of gives you a little bit of where we were and where we're going on the extraction side. The restoration plan is probably not going to really pick up steam until 2024, so I'll be back here next spring, talk a little bit more about where we want to bring material from and which areas we want to restore first. We do have a gentleman who's been farming a lot of the reclaimed areas to the west and southwest for us, Mr. Hogan, and I'd probably be working with him to probably get areas seeded as soon as we can get topsoil down to start getting a vegetative stand so there's no erosion. But that's a longer-term plan, but I think, like I said, right now, from a mining standpoint, we shouldn't go beyond the deadline we were given, and the restoration should be shortly thereafter. So as we mine out, if we create lakes, we're reclaiming pretty much land just by creating water. It's the slopes that are most concerns. That's what I have, if you have questions.
Randy, when is the red going to be gone?
This year. That's the last piece of bank. We hoped we were going to get that out last year. I don't know how sales went or how they blended.
Well, if they go the same as last year, how long will it take?
I don't want to promise by Labor Day, but I'm going to be in a land meeting tomorrow morning with these guys, so I might be able to pin it down.
What could drag into the next year?
I don't think so. I think this, based on length, width, height, that at least that
And when that's gone?
That primary jaw crusher is probably done this year.
Then that's gone.
Yeah. The only exception would be if there's enough material that's still sitting above the water table, like maybe there's five or eight feet, that's still got cobbles in it next year, but it's not going to be a lot. I think this is the last year that we're going to be up against the houses and I'd say running into stuff that's, you know, large enough that we have to crush it and convey it. Then it's going to get pretty quiet.
Okay.
So the restoration is probably then the other impact, just like when we started. We got haul trucks, but at least it's becoming a conclusion then, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
Any other questions?
Any question by council?
Randy?
Yes.
What year are we looking at, do you think, as far as everything totally reclaimed? And let's say, somebody, whether you sell off the property or you guys decide to develop it or whatever, that somebody's going to come in and actually look at what kind of a subdivisions we're going to be looking at over there?
I'm going to throw a dart Alderman slab, but we can't do that until we exhaust the North Reserves, and the North Reserves have to come down to the South Side for processing, and then we have to get the stockpiles sold. So the last piece that's going to get reclaimed is where the plant and the stockpiles sit. But the South Pit, all the way around the perimeters, is supposed to be done by 2026 without the footprint that the plant needs to operate. But unfortunately, the South Side up against Route 120 is going to be the last area to be reclaimed. And I'm going to tell you right now, if I said 2034 as a guess, that once everything's stabilized and released, I can share with you that back in Elgonquin in the late 80s, we had Lexington Homes chopping at our heels over land that we were supposed to reclaim, and we actually worked out a deal with the landowner in Lexington and the state of Illinois, so we didn't have to put the dirt, the topsoil, back because they were going to turn around and take it right back up to start putting homes in. And that's where the Elgonquin Lake subdivision, and then on the Carpenter'sville side, I think it's called Silverstone Lakes, and there's a grade school back there and soccer fields and everything, and it was all on probably about 450 acres off of Bull's Road and Route 62. But it can happen that way. Other times, it'll sit and stabilize for a long time until somebody comes up with, you know, a development idea.
Correct.
We won't do that. We're in the mining business, so yeah.
Yeah, and our concern more than anything else, long-term, is the fact that we've got subdivisions out there that have put up with the mining for so many years.
Right.
Have expected that sooner or later, you know, everything's going to end, and I guess giving them some kind of an idea, because it's not just when the mining ends, now you're going to have all this construction going on as well
Oh, sure.
For a while.
Yeah, there will be development, you know.
Yeah.
Part of a
So we could be looking to, what, 2045 before?
It would be complete, complete.
Complete, complete, yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of land.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to kind of bring that up.
Okay.
Any other questions by council? See none? Any? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You, too. So, where's your proclamations up here on the podium?
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment at this time? See none? Moving on to consent agenda, items 8A through 8G. Looking for a motion by city council. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8G as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Alderman McClatchy's second it. Any questions, comments by council? Alderman Santee?
Just to confirm with maybe Dan or Administrator Moorefield, you, 100, once you start building, 120 days out, it should be complete?
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. I want confirmation. Thank you, Dan.
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah. When were we going to start again? When does this 120, 20 days kickoff?
Dan, can you step to the podium, please?
Thank you.
Hit the button. Middle one.
We should be able to start in the next two weeks.
Okay.
We just got stuff on hold to order and then wanted to get this finished and be sure of it before we put down the deposits, and did everything. But the window system and everything comes from overseas by ship, so it's going to have some lead time. That'll be the last kind of part of the facade to go in.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Santee, go ahead.
I don't need a long explanation, but it was quite interesting that this motorized guillotine windows to be installed. It's an expensive item, so in essence, it'll be motorized to go up to the roof and have it wide open to the front.
It'll be the opposite, it'll come down. We don't want to have a situation where people are walking or tempted to walk in and out with alcoholic beverages, so it'll come down to a 42-inch height so that somebody can't walk in or out, only through the main door.
All right. Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. I'm going to open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Lab?
Yes.
Alderman Murray?
Yes.
Alderman Strach?
Yes.
Alderman Denine?
Yes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Look forward to the project. Oh, boy. All right. 9B is a Class A liquor license to Shelley's Cafe at 4300 West Elm Street. I will go ahead and I'll present this one. So I'm looking for a motion to approve a Class A liquor license to Shelley's Cafe, located at 4300 West Elm Street, and if approved, approve an ordinance amending Title 4, Chapter 2, Alcoholic Liquor, Section 6, License, Clarification and Fees, Approval Authority, Limitation on Number of Licenses, with a license being used, issued after successful background check and a qualified agent-manager. So I'm looking
Maybe show what? Maybe show to let Monty do it.
Yeah. Wow. Thanks, Monty. I'm looking for a motion and a second for 9B as presented. Alderman Harding?
I'll make a motion for B as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Alderman McClatchy for a second. Discussion comments by council? Alderman Miller?
So, in our packet, I don't see a floor plan or a layout or any additional information about the operation. Did I miss something?
No, I said that would be a good thing to include. They didn't, but they are here, so that you can ask them questions directly. But all I have is, all you've got everything I've got, so I don't know anything more than you do right now. But they're here. You're welcome. They're welcome to come on up and maybe if you want to ask them questions.
Thank you, Monty.
Hi, it's, I'm Chris Kaluba. This is Mitchell Voss. It's our concept here, and we're here to answer any questions.
I do have some pictures. There is some other locations. There's Carroll Stream and
Thank you, Mitch.
And in Woodstock, right next door. These pictures are actually from Woodstock. I've all did it on the floor plan, but, sorry.
So the basic concept is a corned beef factory. We missed it. We missed it by three days. Last Friday would have been great. But there is one in Woodstock that's doing quite well. There's one in Carroll Stream that's doing quite well, and hopefully, there's going to be one in McHenry that's doing quite well shortly.
Thank you.
So you actually are a cafe?
Yes.
Serving sandwiches?
Yes.
And it's pickup, drive-up? You don't have a drive-thru in that location either?
There is no drive-thru. There is going to be tables on the inside. I will get you guys a floor plan, I apologize, but I can't send you a floor plan. It should be seating. There'll be a gaming area. All the food will be prepared in the back. The food will be brought up. There will be no mixing of the food and alcohol. They're in two separate locations.
So, based on this, where is your alcohol service?
So the alcohol behind there, you only order from there, but everything's prepared for
It'll be the opposite. It'll come down. We, we don't wanna have a situation where people are walking or tempted to walk in and out with alcoholic beverages, so it'll come down to a 42-inch height so that somebody can't walk in or out, only through the main door.
All right. Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. I'm gonna open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Claskey?
Yes.
Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Lab?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Dine?
Yes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Look forward to the project. Oh, geez. Oh, boy. All right. 9B is a Class A liquor license to Shelley's Cafe at 4300 West Elm Street. Um, I will go ahead and I'll present this one. So I'm looking for a motion to approve a Class A liquor license to Shelley's Cafe located at 4300 West Elm Street. And if approved, approve an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter II, Alcoholic Liquor, Section VI, License, uh, Clarification and Fees, Approval Authority, Limitation on Number of Licenses with a license being used, uh, issued after successful background check and a qualified agent-manager. So I'm looking...
Maybe show what?
Yeah.
Maybe show to let Monty do it.
Yeah.
Wow.
Thanks, Monty. I'm looking, uh, for a motion and a second, uh, for 9B as presented. Alderman Harding?
I'll make a motion for B as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Alderman McClatchy for a second. Uh, discussion, comments by council? Alderman Miller?
So in our packet, I don't see a floor plan or a layout or any additional information about the operation. Did I miss something?
No, I said that would be a good thing to include. Um, they didn't, but they are here so that you can ask them questions directly. That, but all you, all I have is what, all you've got everything I've got, so I don't know anything more than you do right now. So, but they're here. You're welcome. They're welcome to come on up and maybe if you wanna ask them questions.
Thank you, Monty.
Hi, it's, uh, I'm Chris Kaluba. This is Mitchell Voss. It's, uh, it's our concept here, um, and we're here to answer any questions.
I do have some pictures. There is some other locations. Uh, there's Carol Stream and...
Thank you, Mitch.
And in Woodstock, right next door. Uh, these pictures are actually from Woodstock. Um, I've all done it on a floor plan, but, sorry.
So, so the basic concept is a corned beef factory. We, we missed it. We missed it by three days. Last Friday would've been great. Um, but, uh, there is one in Woodstock that's doing quite well. There's one in Carol Stream that's doing quite well. And, uh, hopefully, uh, there's gonna be one in McHenry that's doing quite well as shortly.
Thank you.
So you actually are a cafe?
Yes.
Serving sandwiches?
Yes.
And it's pickup, drive up, drive, you don't have a drive-through in that location?
There is, there is no drive-through. There is gonna be tables on the inside. I will get you guys a floor plan. I apologize. Uh, but I can't send you a floor plan. Um, it should be seating. Uh, there'll be a gaming area. All the food will be prepared in the back. Uh, the food will be brought up. There will be no mixing of the food and alcohol. They're in two separate locations.
So based on this, where is your alcohol service?
So the alcohol will be behind there. You only order from there, but everything's prepared in the back. There is a long hallway to get from the kitchen area back up to the front.
Okay.
So there's gonna be takeout. We expect a lot of, uh, the business to be takeout. Um, but, uh, we are gonna have eight tables?
Yeah.
Um, you can, you can certainly eat inside as well. So we, we expect a mixture of both, but we're expecting a large takeout based off what the other stores are doing.
So that location has a great sidewalk presence there? Were you anticipating expanding outside or is this going to be all contained inside?
It is all inside right now.
Right now it's inside. If we're busting at the seams and, uh, um, uh, it makes sense to maybe expand outside in, in the nice months, that's something that we'd look into.
Any other questions? Alderman Santi?
Yeah. Um, thank you, gentlemen, for coming out tonight. So you have this, um, this business in Woodstock and Carol Stream right now, is that correct?
That's, that's the concept. We're actually, we don't own those businesses.
Okay.
We're, we're, uh, we're basically going with this concept. It's the same supplier of the corned beef and we, we're adopting those concepts.
All right. Um, okay, so this is your, okay, so this is your first business of this type for you?
Yes.
You two individually. Um, can you estimate what you're looking at in regards to, let's say, percentages of people coming in for sandwiches on, uh, for afternoons and evenings as compared to your, uh, video gaming customer base?
Well, the, the place in Carol Stream when they first opened was doing almost 30,000 in food sales a month.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know how much the video gaming will make, but the food sales, if it's based off of just Carol Stream, Woodstock just opened, so they really haven't given us their numbers yet, but Carol Stream is doing...
Does Carol Stream have alcohol, uh, license?
Yes. It is the same name, that concept, yes.
Same, same concept.
And they also have video gaming?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna listen to the other councilmen and, and women, but, uh, I am concerned just 'cause it, I see the concept of what you're doing, um, over the past few years here. I'm not gonna speak for the other, uh, council members, but we have, um, denied some facilities that are coming into town and they'll pitch a product, they'll pitch food, and they're gonna sell, they're gonna, they're gonna sell alcohol, but, um, it's a video gaming parlor. And so that's a concern and I've gotta figure out tonight is discuss with you and try to understand and maybe listening to the other members here to see exactly where they're going, where we're going with this. That being said, I've got one more question. Um, would you be comfortable if you received an alcohol license tonight and forego video gaming for your first year or two?
Based off the concept and what we've talked to with the, the other locations, uh, we don't know if that's gonna make, uh, financial sense. So we, we think the liquor license and the gaming concept along with the, uh, the sandwiches is, is, is a, a new concept that's working at the other two locations, so, uh, we, we wouldn't be able to do that, no.
Okay. Um, I'm done with, done with questions right now.
Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're, Alderman Santi is going and I can't read his mind, but, uh, I know in discussions several years back, we talked about, uh, video gaming and the fact that when, uh, these new businesses come in, we wanna be assured that, uh, the business itself could sustain itself without video gaming and then, uh, the video gaming could come in later. And that's why he's talking the first year or two without it. And, uh, yeah, without it. If you got a business plan that can't survive without the video gaming, uh, it's really not a viable business in the, without being a video gaming place. And it's not really what's being, you know, projected.
We, we've looked at, and, and I think a lot of municipalities are kinda following what, uh, McHenry's doing. We've looked at the, the Stella's and the Dottie's and their menus, what they're serving in the microwaves. Here, we've got, um, let's see...
We have steam tables, like we, we have, I mean, we have everything that the other two places have. It's, it's not just microwaveable food. It's like real corned beef that is, we're buying from the corned beef factory, which is located downtown and...
But by your own admittance, that your financials would not work without video gaming?
Based off the other concepts that we're basing this, uh, on, um, we, we don't know. I, I hope it would. I mean, uh, if we can, if we can make money selling sandwiches, um, and sell it, and, and letting people enjoy a drink and, and video gaming, that would be great. If we could make it all the way around, we just, our concept is based off what's working in Woodstock and what's working in Carol Stream.
Yeah. I mean, the way I look at it is, is if we take and, uh, we're just approving places that it, because of the video gaming and they can't survive without the video gaming, then, uh, every, uh, location that we keep adding in, and we've been the leader of video gaming in, uh, the county, I believe, uh, but every time you add one in, you're taking away from the rest of the establishments or the potential of them existing. And, you know, yeah, the, the strongest survive, but, uh, are we going to build a area up to where we're gonna have businesses fail because of how many video places are out there? And that's a concern to me, that, uh, we open up one and then somebody else is gonna wind up closing further down the road. And that was the whole idea that Alderman Santi had brought up, uh, a couple of years back as, as far as the fact that we should be looking at, uh, viable businesses first, uh, whether they could survive with or without the, uh, video gaming.
Alderman Miller, go ahead.
So tell me more about your background. Are you in the restaurant business? Are you in the sandwich business? Is this your first attempt at a business? Do you have others?
I, I've, I've got a real estate background. Uh, I'm a real estate attorney. I've, uh, I represent a lot of, uh, um, restaurants, uh, down the road. My, um, kinda my, uh, coming into this was my in-laws were in the restaurant industry for years. So, uh, whether or not I asked for it or not, my father-in-law's gonna, uh, give me plenty of, of advice on how to run restaurants. That's kinda where my, my background is on this.
I'm in, I'm in real estate as well. I used to work at a sandwich shop when I was 16. Uh, that's my extent of it, but as far as running a business, I'm following him and we're gonna hopefully do it.
So will you two be actively in the shop every day or are you just going to be hiring employees to do the operations?
I mean, for the first, however long it takes to stabilize, I would say I would be the majority of the time, yes.
If you see me there, I'm probably gonna be eating. I'm, I'm, and my kinda, the concept here for me coming is I'm, I wanna make sure compliance. Uh, I wanna make sure everything's done the right way. Um, if, uh, if I have to come in there and work, uh, I will, that will be the, the last thing on my thing, but if, if it's necessary and someone doesn't show up, uh, that's what we're gonna have to do. But we hope to hire some good, uh, good employees so that they can operate this. And we wanna develop this concept to other communities as well. This is the, the first one that we're trying. I know everyone's reluctant to try sometimes a new concept and stuff, but, uh, like I said, what we've studied in the other communities, they're working out well. Um, so we're hoping to, to duplicate that here in McHenry and to, you know, take it to another community as well. Another item is, uh, you know, we looked at McHenry, we looked at other municipalities. We're also concerned about the saturation of, of the gaming. We don't think it's here yet. I don't think it's actually closed yet. If you go to other communities, um, there's 12 on, you know, each block and, and they're still, they're still performing. So I still think there's room for that. I think there's room for a sandwich shop, more importantly. I think there's, uh, I think we're gonna sell a lot of sandwiches. Like I said, uh, we missed the boat. I wish we were open last Friday. Would've had a line out the door.
What do you think your hours will be?
Uh, we, we actually talked about that on the way here. We're gonna, uh, we're gonna see what the, um, the market brains. We're gonna, initially, we're gonna open up early and, and stay open late, but if, if, if nobody's coming in, we'll adjust those. Uh, we figured, uh, takeout for lunch, maybe 10, 10:30 is probably gonna be a good time to get open then. Um, the lunch crowd, 10:30 to 1:30. Uh, the dinner crowd, probably four to six will be our busy time, but we'll stay open later. Um, and, uh, uh, again, it's just gonna be, we wanna make sure that, uh, it makes sense for us to be open all those hours.
And if you, if you've looked at our marketplace, 'cause I've not been to the corned beef factory in Woodstock, I don't know how I missed it, um, but I have. So if you've looked at McHenry, what do you think is your competition? Who do you think is most resemblance of your proposal?
I don't, it, we're looking really at the concept and, and the location we're gonna be at. I don't think there's any competition in, in our, we, we think there's a lot of foot traffic in there. We think that foot tra, traffic's gonna feed the business. I think people are gonna come into that place because of the, the sandwiches, not because there's video gaming in there and stuff. That's kind of like an ancillary use. Um, but again, I can't, I can't say the financials will, will hold on their own because, you know, we, we haven't sold one sandwich yet. But I think that the sandwich concept is gonna bring it in. And talking to the guys who ran, uh, Carol Stream and Woodstock, that's, that's the same for them. The people come in for the sandwiches. Sometimes they stay, sometimes they leave, sometimes it's carryout, but the concept seems to be working.
Perfect. Thank you.
Alderman Devine?
I just wanna make this, um, note that a couple of years ago, we had a sandwich shop in McHenry that had McHenry Roots and they wanted a gaming license. And we turned them down and made them wait a year to be successful. So I just want everybody to be reminded of that. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Santi?
Yeah, um, I, thank you, Alderman Devine. I had that note, um, here. Uh, Don Sub came in and, uh, submarine shop and after a year, um, you know, they received their gaming license. Uh, and then also, uh, Video Poker who came in front of us a couple of weeks ago 'cause we're moving. I believe they were looking at a second location a couple of years ago? Can anybody, anybody recall that? Did they come to us? The same owners? 'Cause we, we denied the second video gaming facility for them. And you can understand, I, hopefully, gentlemen, you can understand my concern here is that, yes, we do have an abundance of gaming here in town. Um, the Stella's, the Dottie's, those things came in early. And, um, I think of, at the time, the elected officials saw that, well, we've got these places going up and you sure they serve alcohol and yeah, they've got these, uh, these small ovens to, to cook sandwiches, but, um, you know, a very high percentage of their traffic was, was, was gaming, just gaming. And, uh, that's, that's my concern here is that I just, you know, that's why I feel if there's a concept here, if you came in with a, you know, a, yeah, well, or 11, 100-seat restaurant, you know, that you're gonna have a bar restaurant, okay. You know, now you guys are making a commitment. Now there's a lot of, uh, uh, you know, there, there's definitely, uh, a concept of a restaurant. And those have always gone through, but we've kinda, you know, pulled back the harness, let's say, in regards to just these smaller, yeah, sandwich shops, but they want their gaming, they want their, their alcohol license immediately. And I understand it. I want you to make a dollar. I, I wanna make a dollar or two every day. Uh, it's just that I, you know, I have a concern with, with, that's, that's the concept, uh, of just a, a, a gaming cafe and everything else is, 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 is third or second down the line. Um, and there was one more item that I had and I lost my train of thought. So I'll defer to the rest of the council.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments by council? See none?
I, I'll just say one last thing. Um, I, I do, I do represent some, uh, another operator who has, I would, uh, gaming cafe. Um, and, and I, I understand your concerns because one of their biggest issues is, you know, they, they had to have the, the microwave. They've got spoilage of food. They don't sell any food. It was, it was granted years ago. That's not gonna be our, our case here. Um, this was started, we look at the concept in Chicago, um, where the meat's coming from. Uh, most of our discussions with this has, has been with the supplier. We wanna make sure we've got a, a good sandwich. It's a great sandwich. I told Mitchell here, we should've brought sandwiches tonight. Um, but it's, it's a great concept with the sandwich. So it's, um, if, if you, if you look at the other concepts that we're, we're basing this off of, they're, they're selling a lot of sandwiches. The, the gaming is, the gaming and the alcohol sales are involved as well, but they're selling a lot of sandwiches and that's what we're looking to do here. We, we wanna be a sandwich shop that has gaming, not, not a gaming location that has sandwiches.
All right. Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, I hope I don't see corned beef again for a long time after this weekend. But, uh, I just got a quick question. Uh, it seems like everything's focusing around your gaming machines. Where are they gonna be? Like, uh, the layout? Are you gonna have your own room?
Yeah, it's, it's in its own room. You walk into the place, and I apologize for not giving you guys a floor plan, but if you look in the window, it's pretty much, you walk in, the bar's to your left. If, if you guys have been to the old Alexander's Pawn Shop, that was there before. But there's a vegetable, you walk in, so you walk in and you walk in right into all the dining room tables. And then you walk around, there's a bar, it probably sits, I would say, six to eight people, if that. It's where you order your food and everything. Like I said, the food's prepared way in the back. And then you actually have to walk through almost like a room that's got three out of the four walls and then there's like a knee wall that comes out the rest of the way. So it's completely separated from everything else.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other? Alderman Strack, go ahead.
So I just wanna clarify a couple of things, not to beat up the business plan. The, the main entry into the restaurant, as you just spoke of, is really the, the face of what you're going to see from the windows will be a service counter, prep, purchase of food. The majority of what you're gonna see when you walk in the door is food. You're gonna go down a long hallway to get to the gambling area? Is that...
You're not gonna go down a long hallway, but it's definitely tucked around in the corner. Like if you looked in the front windows, you maybe see like the tops of the games farther back. You definitely see the bar and all the tables first.
Got it. So the restaurant's on the front half?
Yes.
And that's really your main focus?
Yes. And we're in 3,500 square feet. Most cafes, if you wanna call it, are like a thousand square feet. So we have a lot of square footage to work in.
Sure. And, and another difference, if you look at the Stella's, it, it's age restricted. You can't even walk in unless you're 21. That's not our concept here. Our concept here is if a family wants to come in or they wanna play, someone wants to come in after a softball game and eat, they can come in there and they, they can eat with the family. If someone else wants to go in there and have a beer and, and, and go to the games, they can do that. But the concept here is we wanna fill the people there with the sandwiches. I'd love to make money from both. Like I said, I'm a little reluctant to say, uh, one's can serve without the other just because those are the concepts that we studied. But, uh, if we can prosper with sandwiches and, and basically make additional money with some gaming, that's a win-win situation for everybody.
Sure. But it does feel like what you're speaking of, at least for myself, is that the focus is on all of it. It's, it's not, you're not merely gonna serve higher-end sandwiches to try to get people to come game. I'm seeing two other places in town that just removed some video gaming to put additional seats in for better revenue. So it, I don't have as much of a concern as I've heard from other council members because I feel like the product you're offering is a little bit more of a higher end than a microwave cheeseburger out of a piece of plastic container while I'm gambling. Do you, can you tell me just a, what, what a normal price of your sandwich would be? Do you have any of that statistic yet?
They're on the menu. It's kinda hard to read. But like a corned beef sandwich is 13 bucks. Ruben's 14. Pastrami is 13. I mean, this isn't, you know, your five-dollar cheeseburger like you said.
Got it.
Coming out of a microwave.
So ultimately, the, the clientele that you're trying to attract, the demographic you're looking to bring in is, is really for the sandwich and have them do some gaming as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The sandwiches, like, like I said, we should've brought sandwiches. It's a, it's a quality sandwich. We're not going with, um, it took us a while to find, when we saw the concept, we wanted to make sure we had the right supplier for the corned beef. Um, and that, that has probably been the most difficult thing. All of our meetings have been with them. Um, that's been the most difficult thing. We didn't go to Greco and some of these big suppliers. We want a special meat and that's what these guys provide. And like I said, the concept that we studied was the concept that we're pitching here today. Um, so that's why we think it's gonna work because it's working in, in two other municipalities.
And I'm sorry if no one's ever been at the corned beef factory anywhere, but it comes in like a brown box. It stands for the corned beef. You have like a twine or rope around it. It's like a, not a gimmicky thing, but it's, it's higher end.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments by council? All right. Any other questions, comments by council? All right. You two can have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open up for public comment regarding this item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Clatchey?
Yes.
Alderman Santie?
No.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderman Shrek?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
No.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That item has passed. Next item on the agenda is 9C is a video gaming license to Shelley's Cafe, 4300 West Elm Street. I am looking for a motion to approve 9C. Alderman Strach?
I'll make the motion as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Harding?
A seconded motion.
Thank you. Discussion by council on this item. Alderman Santie?
Well, depending on this vote, I'd like to have these gentlemen come back up to see if, if they would continue, if they do not get the gaming to start this restaurant. Excuse me. And just to reiterate, Alderman Devine brought it up, Don Submarine. People that had it, they started it. And we were concerned because of the location and the size of floor space, that we proposed the alcohol at start, and then come in with the gaming in a year. They were successful. They have a good product. And, I mean, I'd like to see these gentlemen be, become successful. But, you know, I'd like to look at, well, depending on what happens on the vote, look at the possibility of maybe offering this up in a year or two. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments regarding this item by council? See none? All right, you may have a seat again. Thank you. I am asking the public for public comment. Is there any public comment regarding this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Shrek?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Santie?
No.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderman Clatchey?
Yes.
Alderman DeBai?
No.
Alderman Miller?
No.
The item has failed for gaming.
Alderman Clatchey was, uh...
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is discussion item 10A is a presentation and discussion of a proposed 23, 24 fiscal year budget for the following funds: general fund, general operating departments, recreation center fund, water fund, sewer fund, and utility fund. City Administrator Morfield, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I got the hint, everybody. All right, I'll talk fast tonight. I had a few people telling me like, how long is this going to be tonight? So...
I read every line of its orders.
I know. Yeah, I know you did.
You probably did.
Right. Great. I gotta get my...
I'll check, check their pajamas.
Right. Well, first of all, I gotta be able to get my mouse on the right thing here. That's all right. I'm just going to run it like this. We can follow along. I can't get my mouse to work for some reason. That's right. It's going to run it this way. Keep messing with the, Frank, it shows up on the, wait, put it down there again. It's just, there, there we go. Now we got it. Thank you, sir.
Leave it to the IT guy.
I know. No kidding. He touched it, and it started to work. Right, yeah. All right, there we go. Thanks, Frank. So thanks, thank you, Mayor. And I do this presentation every year as one of a, one of two presentations. The second one's a lot shorter, although I'm going to talk fast tonight. But if council, as always, if you have any questions, just stop me along the way. I want to acknowledge the directors and Carolyn for all their hard work on this. And just for the, mainly for the public, I'd like to mention also, for those that are in attendance and those that may watch this later on online, you know, this is, to me, it's super important. This is one of the most important responsibilities that I have as a city administrator, is dealing with the budget. Our, our approach to the budgeting process is fiscally conservative, and you'll see that throughout the budget. And I'll hit on a couple of things as I go along. And by that, I mean specifically that our revenues are realistic, and that our expenditures are metered throughout the year. And that gets us in a good place. You know, this, this may sound bragging, and I guess it is, so I will brag, that, I mean, I want to say, I, I think this is, that, I know that the city's in the strongest financial position that it's been in, in at least the last 12 years, and probably the last 25 years, if not longer than that. We have a solid fund balance. We've identified revenue streams for our capital projects. We have identified revenue streams for our water and sewer projects. Our, our tax base is solid from a property tax, sales tax, and income tax standpoint. And we're just real, in a really great place right now. Of course, that can always change, but that's where we are today. Just as a reminder, as I go through the numbers tonight, they could change between tonight and the next council meeting, just based on any input council has tonight, or anything that may come up along the way. We, we always highlight those at the next meeting, so if there are any number changes, we'll let you know. I'll move on. So the, the focus of tonight is to do a quick review of the 22, 23 general fund budget, our estimated revenues and expenditures coming out of the current fiscal year that we're in. Just highlight those. The, take a look at the proposed general fund revenues and expenditures for the next fiscal year, which begins May 1st of '23, runs through April 30th of '24. Take a look at the status of the general fund balance, which is our, some places call it the rainy day fund. You know, I don't really like that terminology, to be honest with you. I mean, it's our savings account. If anything goes bad, terribly wrong, that is the fund that we go to to fund our operations. And, and our policy says that that should be 120 days, which, when you think about it, if things go that bad that we have to dip into that fund, then it's probably going to go longer than 120 days. So that doesn't really get us much operations. But anyway, that's what our policy is, and that's what the standard policy is. I will take a quick look at the recreation center budget, and the water and sewer fund, and then capital asset maintenance and replacement projects. And then I always keep a slide at the end for additional recommendations. I talked to a few of you about those in the last few days. Just some highlights of the current fiscal year, and where we're estimating that we're going to end up at. Again, we don't end until April 30th, so a lot of these are projections based on performance of the previous nine months of the year. We won't know for sure until the year's closed out, and we do our audit, which is presented to council in October and November of each year. But just to hit on the highlights, estimated year-end general fund revenues are about $4.5 million higher than the amount that we budgeted. I'll get into more detail on why in a little while. Our estimated, so that's good. Our revenues are higher than we budgeted. Our revenue, our expenditures are about $2,000, which isn't a lot, but $2,000 less than the budgeted amount. And again, I'll get into that later on. The general fund operating budget will be balanced coming up in '23, '24, with, with revenues over expenditures of about $250,000. So we didn't spend every single dollar that we're taking in from a revenue over expenditure standpoint for next year. In '23, '24, general fund revenues are forecasted to increase by about $3 million, or 11%, 11 and a half percent, from the current fiscal year budget. The local street program, which we like to talk about, is about, will be, is about $3.9 million. And we spent more than $8 million over the last, over the last two years on streets. And we probably hadn't spent $8 million on streets in the 10 years before that. It's just a guess. So we spent $8 million in the last two fiscal years on streets, or in the fiscal year we're in and coming up. The, the, there's no water rate increase that we'll be recommending for '23, '24, based on our operations for water. We will be recommending, or are recommending, a .17 or 4% per thousand gallon sewer rate increase. And again, I'll get on to that later on. Our 120-day general fund balance is achieved. So again, that's 120 days of what our proposed operating expenditures are. It's not just some number that we come up with. And then with the adoption of the electric and natural gas utility taxes last year, we're able to ensure that general fund capital assets, maintenance and replacement is, projects are completed. Those are included in the upcoming year budget, because that's a utility tax. The electric gas is one that we've already put into place, that's already making us revenues. And the other one doesn't start until '23, so we can't budget for money that we don't have. And that's for new projects. That's the, the gas tax.
Administrator Morfield?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
I'm sorry, not to slow you down here, but just going back to the, the street program with the $8 million over the last two fiscal years?
Yeah.
Which is tremendous. One of the things that I think needs to be brought out is the fact that, I know over the last 25 years, every time we've done any kind of a bigger street program, we've had the bond money, and we didn't done this.
That's correct. Right.
So this has already been paid for.
Yep. Yep. Money that we, that we earned through, or allocated to us through MFT, either the, the state allocation, our local MFT, road and bridge fund, and then any surpluses in public works contractual, at least over the last year, we've been able to reserve to add to that, that amount also. So you're correct. There's no, we've not had to borrow for it. I think the last time we did that, it took us 20 years to pay for it. And by that time, the roads needed to be started over again for resurfacing. So, thanks for bringing that up, Alderman Glab. So I use, you can't see the numbers on this form, but this is the sheet that I use as the overview. There's a bigger one in your packet. Basically, what this shows, the, the purpose of this is to show historical actuals all the way back to 16, 17. And then we've come up to a budgeted amount for the current fiscal year, the estimated year ending amount, and then the proposed amount for next year. And I'll break this down as we move along. I'll make it larger and focus in on specific columns as we move along. So first, we'll take a look at general fund revenues and expenditures. And I identify that it's in pages three to 11 is in your memo that you have in your packet, is where the narratives for this information will be found. So just as a reminder, general fund revenues are derived primarily from property taxes, state and local sales tax, and state income tax. And then I will also highlight video gaming. Last year, we, video gaming revenues were $850,000. They've about doubled in the last five years. And for '23 and '24, we are estimating $940,000 in video gaming revenues. So that is no longer a minor revenue source for the municipality. It's one that contributes substantially to our general fund, general fund revenues. And then general fund expenditures are comprised basically in a few, couple different areas: personnel, contractual, supplies, which are costs relating to the, to operating departments, and then capital outlay and transfers to other general fund, or from the general fund to other funds. So in that big sheet that I just showed you, we focus on the top half of that, first of all, for the FY '22, '23 budget and estimated amount. So what we budgeted for this year, and where we think we're going to end up this year are those two columns. So just some highlights, and this breaks down some of the figures that I talked to you about before. But FY '22, '23 estimated year-end revenues, again, I identified that they're going to be about $4.5 million or 7% higher than the amount budgeted, which seems like, wait, we, we really missed the ball on this one if we budgeted that much less. But there were some reasons for it. State sales taxes are estimated at about $180,000 more, which is, you know, that's a minor amount comparatively. Local sales tax is estimated about $560,000 higher. State income taxes continue to come in higher, $640,000, or about 18% higher. Again, video gaming was about $90,000 more than we estimated or budgeted for. And then some of these other ones were, again, unknowns at the time the budget was done. Reimbursements for services, interest, interest income, as we know, interest rates are, are going up. That includes, you know, interest rates on money that we have. So that amount came in higher. Miscellaneous income, and the biggest one on this was our second installment of ARPA or COVID funds. If you remember, that was distributed over a two-year period. So this was the second year that we, we received those funds. Until we get them, especially since they're coming from the feds, like, I never really want to plan that we're going to get that money, even though we were totally were. But we did. We got that money this year. And if you remember, we used the ARPA funds to offset allowable expenses that we had for COVID, which in this case were, were in the police department. And what that does is then we're able to replenish the general fund dollars that we used to pay police, to re, to reimburse those funds back to ourselves. But basically, what we did is we put that $3.6 million into a separate account that will be allocated for the Route 31 project. We've informed council about that along the way. But that's basically where the ARPA funds have gone, is to, to the Route 31 project, which will be coming up here in a couple of years. Then all other general fund revenues netted about $280,000. So if you look at miscellaneous and some of the other rows, that's where those came in at. And overall, just as a snapshot, you know, we're still doing well from a recovery standpoint post-COVID. There's no way that I could have guessed, or anybody I think did guess, that we would have, we would be here today after what we, what potentially could have happened, and what did happen during COVID. But people are still spending money. They're still purchasing items. They're still buying homes. They're still buying durable goods. It's going to end at some point. But right now, as we sit here in this fiscal year, we're, we're in a good place. Now we move to expenditures. So we go to the bottom half of that spreadsheet, and we look at those same two columns in terms of expenditures. And the highlights here, overall, general fund expenditures are estimated about $2,400 less than budgeted. Not a huge amount, but again, I'll get into the reason why here in a few minutes. Capital outlay is estimated about $670,000 more, primarily due to budget amendments that we presented and council made during the year for property acquisition costs, Green Street properties. And if you take these, that, those numbers out, our, our expenditures are actually about $670,000 under budget, or 2.5% less than the amount that we budgeted. Personnel costs were about $20,000 less due to unfilled positions. It was offset slightly with overtime costs because of those unfilled positions. Contractual costs were about $40,000 higher due to budget amendments for the building demolition costs I talked about earlier. And then supply costs, even though supply costs generally are going up, we were able to keep our supply costs for the current fiscal year at about $14,000 less than the amount budgeted. So we were able to manage, even though, though generally the costs are going up. You'll see that in the '23, '24 budget. And again, these amounts may change if something happens between now and April 30th, that, that we have to change those numbers. But that's where we're at right now. So just on the current fiscal year that we're in right now, revenues or expenditures, anything that I've gone over, or other questions that you have about those? Yeah? Sorry.
Alderman Santie, go ahead.
Yeah, real, real quick. Administrator Morfield and myself had a conversation today, and, you know, I did some highlighting, and he just highlighted some of those, those revenues. And I guess there was one thing that he's, that Administrator Morfield has drilled into us, and I got to believe that Carolyn's in, also backs, backed this up too, is that he really stresses to, you know, keep us on the low end of, you know, of expenditures, whereas, you know, he could, I don't know how to say it. He could roll the dice, and we could, you know, hey, we're going to spend a little bit more money because it should be coming in. He's never looked at it that way, and I, I applaud him for that, because he's just, he's definitely playing tight with the money, with the checkbook, which I do appreciate. And, you know, we are fortunate with, you know, some of those, the local sales tax, those percentages, you know, 17. The state sales tax was up 17%, you know, over his estimate. So yes, were we estimating low? Okay, we were. But guess what? You know, we, we showed at the end that we're, you know, we're on, we're, you know, we're in a black number, not a red number, put it that way. Thank you.
Yeah. One of the things, I, I think the way, when we had a conversation, Alderman Santie, a couple of things. First of all, typically, when we have a surplus, revenues over expend, over expenditures during a fiscal year, that surplus typically goes back into capital projects anyway. So it doesn't just, we don't plant it out back in a box or something and just kind of sit on it. And we don't build up a fund balance either. We have a fund balance policy of 120 days, and that's what we keep it as. We don't have an exorbitant amount of money that we hold on to, just for the sake of having an exorbitant amount of money, that any surplus goes back into projects, especially capital projects. And, and that philosophy's been able to get us where we're at. And the other, I think the, the, the story I use is like a, someone that works purely on commission, and they've had their commission relatively steady for a number of years. And for whatever reason, they think that next year, they're going to make 30% more in their commission. So they go buy 30% more things, hoping that they can pay for it with that commission. they can pay for it with that commission. Well, if it doesn't come in, then they're in trouble, 'cause they've bought all these new things that they have to pay for with the commission that didn't happen. So, we don't like to, we don't like to think that we're gonna make more money than we're actually gonna make, we're extremely conservative in our estimation of revenues. Uh, some of those are given us to us by the IML, the only municipal league, and we base it on their estimates. But we are extremely conservative with our estimates, and if we do better than that, great, then we can roll it into the following year projects. So, that's, thank you for bringing that up, Alderman Santie. All right, and, go ahead.
Alderman, go ahead.
I just wanna go ahead and thank you again, Derek, that, um, you have made a very complex budget easy to bite one bite at a time, 'cause you've taken that process for all of us, myself included, and really brought it to the line by line, and that makes it doable. Um, and of course, to echo Alderman Santie, thank you for being conservative, both in receipts and expenditures, 'cause at the end of the year, we like having the money to put back into the special projects that we need to put it into. So, thank you.
And, you know, I don't spend every dollar, it's the directors and the people that work for them, and so really, I, I lean on them and I applaud them for their management style and instilling that in our employees, that, you know, we buy what we need and we don't buy more than we need, and, uh, and we're able to do well on our expenditures every year. So, thank you. All right, into twenty-three, twenty-four, same format. So, I'll talk about revenues first, it's the same sheet that we've been using, we just bump over a column, so what we take a look at is the amount we budgeted in twenty-two, twenty-three, and you can kinda see in the middle white column what we're estimating, and then the other green column on the right is what we're proposing for the upcoming fiscal year. So, just again, some highlights of these, our revenues, uh, again, this is being, this is being the conservative estimate of revenues, uh, we're estimating it, uh, three million dollars higher than twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So, just think about that, that our actual revenues could be four point five million dollars from this year's budget, and we're estimating that they'll go up another three million dollars next fiscal year, and that's the conservative estimate of it. Um, so, anyway, that's where we're at, uh, that's done with no property tax levy increase, I'll say that again, that's done with no property tax levy increase. I believe Carolyn will correct me, twelve out of the last thirteen years, we've either decreased the property tax, well, we decreased it one year and we kept it flat the other years. So, only one year out of the last thirteen years is the city council, uh, raised the property tax levy and raised property taxes on the residents of McHenry, so I applaud you for that. So, that, that's basically a null increase when you look at it, uh, revenue for the city. Uh, state sales tax, we proposed at two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars higher. Local sales tax, still performing really well at about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. State income tax, again, we get this number from I, IML, and Carolyn and I are like, all right, like, I mean, this is what, you know, the analysts at IML are looking at based on their data, that state income tax is gonna continue to go up. And, uh, video gaming will, we tacked on another ni, another fifty thousand dollars, and we think that's gonna be, uh, for next year to get us to nine hundred and forty thousand, I think is what our estimate is for next year. Income, uh, interest income, we don't see, uh, our interest going down anytime soon on our money, so that about three hundred and forty-seven thousand higher. And then reimbursement for services, most of this is, uh, I think about seven hundred and some thousand of it is reimbursement through PSAP, uh, for the dispatch center, so they're restricted, it's restricted funding from, uh, the nine-one-one PSAP, uh, to the dispatch center. So, while that looks like a big number, it's not, that's not money that we can just use for anything, it's, it's restricted to the, uh, to the nine-one-one center.
Alderman Morfield.
Yeah.
I, sorry.
No, no, thank you.
Administrator Morfield, we just demoted him.
That's all right.
Uh, question I had was is on the, uh, let's see, the state is, are we at the fifteen dollar minimum now?
For, uh, for, uh, minimum wage?
Yeah.
It's third, thirteen right now.
Okay, so, two more years?
Yeah.
Okay, so therefore, that seventeen percent, uh, takes that into account, uh, that extra dollar or whatever of the year?
Yeah, however, right, however, I mean, honestly, we get our numbers from IML, uh, the only municipal league, so I'm sure that they factor all those items into it. Carolyn might know better than me, but, um, I, I would assume so, 'cause their numbers have been pretty good the last few years.
Okay, I, 'cause I'm looking at that, and then I'm thinking, uh, you know, do we include the, uh, percentages, uh, of growth within the city as well?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions on any of the revenues proposed for next year? All right, uh, same drill onto expenditures, so the bottom half of that sheet, just, uh, the two columns over. And again, these are four main areas, proposed operating expenditures are about three million dollars higher, eleven percent. These are broken down below, so personnel, uh, which, again, I, I define personnel, even though we think right away of wages and personnel costs, it also includes benefits. So, it's salary and benefits for personnel costs are one point eight million dollars of that, and then that's even broken down here. So, as you can see, out of that one point eight million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand is for FICA, IMRF, and insurance increases, about three hundred thousand is for, uh, two, uh, school resource officers. If you recall, we've had two at the high schools, and, uh, we brought to council, and we'll be having two, in fact, they're hired already, two at the middle schools, and the schools offset seventy percent of those costs. So, while here it's shown as a expenditure in terms of it's gonna cost the city three hundred thousand dollars, we actually get reimbursed seventy percent of that from the school. All right, so just understand that from a revenue and expenditure standpoint. Uh, two hundred and forty-two thousand is for, uh, two lead, two, uh, lead dispatch communicators, and again, this amount is offset by our NERCOM partners, uh, so it's not revenues that necessarily we, from our revenue sources, other than reimbursements from our partners in the dispatch center. Uh, two fourteen, eight is for non-bargaining unit increases, so again, we have, we have, uh, uh, one fifty represents parks and public works, the FOP represents unit one and two of the police department, and then the, about the other forty-some, fifty employees that don't cover those full-time, that don't make up those are non-bargaining unit, uh, individuals. Uh, the non-bargaining unit increases are based on whatever in their contracts, and then a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for, we don't often bring new positions to city council, this is one that a couple of council members and others have talked to me about. Um, we're gonna put the, we have a, uh, we have a job description built out for it, Anne has done some comps, um, this is benefits and salary costs for the position, but the concept is this, it's a, uh, basically a, a PIO for the non-police side. So, a commu, so police has a PIO that's a sworn officer that does all their social media website, they do community outreach, they gather their information and get it out to the public. We kinda do that piecemeal right now, uh, other than police, um, things like the newsletter and our social media accounts and our website, and just kinda getting the word out there. And so, we put the costs in, we did the research on it, we wanna do some additional research on this position before we just run out and hire somebody. First of all, to see, um, make sure, before we hire someone, that, that we're gonna be paying for multiple years, that it's not something that we can do in-house, so we'll take a look at that first. And then, probably defer hiring that individual, um, I would recommend it anyway until, uh, at least January of twenty-four with a new administrator. I mean, I'm just gonna say it. So, I would, I would, uh, just recommend that, because why, why should I go through and hire someone if, that's gonna work for an administrator, if, if, uh, if that person may look for other characteristics in them? So, it'll take us that amount of time anyway, I think, to kinda look internally on, on what the needs are and whether or not we can meet them ourselves or not. We wanna do at least get the costs in here, 'cause it's a concept that we, um, that we've talked about, and we don't wanna have to come back at some other point. If we don't do it, we don't do it, and we have the money that'll go back into the general fund.
Administrator Morfield.
Yes, sir.
Got it right this.
That's all right.
Yeah, the only thing that concerns me is, is when we start talking about new positions and adding on, um, I brought it up, I think, a couple of years ago when we were looking at the budget, and that's the fact that you start looking at, uh, personnel costs versus the entire budget, and, uh, we were getting eaten up so much that, uh, you know, there wasn't any money, much money for capital improvements at that time and everything else, so, uh, I know in, uh, public works, uh, you know, uh, Troy took and, uh, did a great job as far as, uh, doing more for less, and, uh, that, therefore, we got more projects, uh, you know, on the capital improvements, and, uh, I just wanna be sure that, uh, we're not taking that out of whack again.
Yeah, and, and me too, and us too, as, uh, administration, um, you know, it's something we've talked, Anne and I talked quite a bit about, and, you know, that's why we chose, let's do the research, let's, let's have it ready to go, we'll do some additional research, we'll keep council in the loop on it. Um, and we just, you know, it's taken, I mean, I'll just, again, I'll just say it, it's taken eleven years to get staffing, um, people in the positions they need to be in and with the responsibilities they need to have. You identified Troy, that's an example where he's done a great job over there in public works, but Ross has done the same thing in community development, and Anne's done the same thing, you know, basically Anne's worked with all of them to make that happen. So, we will not take it lightly, I guess I'll put it that way. Um, I don't take it lightly adding a position, because I know it costs us money, and it will not, it'll cost us money in more than one year, and so we'll really put the work in to make sure that this is not something that we can do internally, and if we need to, uh, go external or hire someone to do it, then it'll be for good reason, and we'll make sure to communicate that to council. Uh, then I just finish out here, contractual costs, again, this is an example where now we're getting into, um, you know, just the cost of doing business and the shifting of, uh, where we had employees doing work, and now we're contracting out that work, so it may look like six hundred thousand dollars, uh, and contractual costs is a lot, but, um, if that replaced hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in employees or in positions, then that's important also to keep in mind. Uh, and then supply costs higher, I talked about that earlier, just mainly due to increased pricing, but even at that, a hundred thousand's not too bad considering where some of the pricing like gasoline's gone over the last, over the last couple of years. Uh, importantly, I mentioned this earlier, overall revenues are, and over expenditures, the budget's balanced, uh, in my time, I've never brought, we've never brought, and 'cause it's, again, everybody participates, we've never brought council a budget that has not been balanced from an operational standpoint. Some years it was close, by like sixty thousand dollars a few years ago, but, uh, but it's always been at least balanced and been able to, uh, carry a surplus over for, uh, capital projects or, or other needs. Any ques, other questions about expenditures at all, proposed expenditures? The general fund balance, I'll hit on real quick, um, again, we're in a good place, uh, these are just a lot of tens of millions of dollars numbers here, but basically where our fund balance needs to be based on our expenditures is about nine point seven million dollars. And again, that's a hundred and twenty days of what our, what a fiscal year's worth of operating costs are, non-water sewer operating costs are. And so, you can see, kinda look at the bottom there, uh, and that's, really breaks it down. So, we make sure first of all that that fund balance can be met for the policy, then we, uh, again, set aside that three point six million dollars of COVID ARPA funds that we got for a looming Route Thirty-One project that's gonna take place here in a couple of years, at least start in a couple of years. Um, again, the city is on the hook for at least, at least eight million dollars of that project. I mean, it could be higher, it could be lower, but that's the number I'm using right now, and, uh, so we don't wanna start flat-footed when the IDOT hands us a bill for eight million dollars or whatever it is and have to come up with that money. So, I, I'm dedicated to setting aside money while I'm here to at least start biting into that. Um, two point four million dollars has been, has been assigned for capital projects, so again, this is where, um, either we take revenues and we dedicate it to capital projects, or it's carryover, or it's surplus funds, uh, all of those things, or revenues generated through, uh, the utility taxes in place that we're able to assign specifically for capital projects that, that are identified later in this presentation. And then again, I identified earlier that seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars that's restricted to PSAP, that's through the nine-one-one board specifically to, for use by the dispatch center, for dispatch center services. I crossed the last one out because that number changed, so it doesn't apply, but we'll circle back around to it, uh, in a few minutes. Again, I, I stopped a couple of years ago going through every line item of every operating fund budget, 'cause we'd be here another two hours, uh, but this is just a reminder of, uh, operating funds include all, uh, costs related to those, uh, units that we opt, of, uh, employees that we operate that make the city run, except for, uh, recreation center, water sewer, and utility divisions, and information technology. All other operating departments of the city are funded through the general fund. Um, our processes, the directors develop what their, what their needs are for the year, they submit them to Carolyn and I, uh, for review, uh, when and if needed, we, uh, talk to them about what their requests are, and then we, uh, put together this budget that comes to council each year. Again, I don't have, I'm not gonna go through every single budget, I did provide you with highlights, um, from each of those operating funds, and I just broke them down for you into a couple of slides, I'm not even gonna go through each of these since I put them in front of you in this case, I already kinda went over the highlights of them as part of the expenditures, and if, if you have any questions, just let me know, but these are just kinda the highlights of, uh, from each of those operating funds. Are there any questions on any of those at all? The last thing we'll get into, or last two things, is, uh, McHenry Recreation Center, I've always included it as part of this discussion just because it is a, it's an enter, it's an operating department of the municipality, but it's not funded through general fund dollars. As we know, the, the recreation center is funded, uh, through the revenues that it generates on its own, that's the way that it was set up. It's hard to believe that it's been, uh, since sixteen, since that place opened, 'cause it always seems like yesterday we broke ground over there across the parking lot. The goal has always been able to build the membership to levels that would fund, uh, the operations of the rec center, and we, we were able to knock it out of the park doing that until COVID hit. And, uh, even though we kept the center open and, uh, Bill's worked hard at, you know, creating, extending those memberships and keeping people on even through COVID, and, and giving them extensions to their memberships and everything possible so that when COVID ended, we could be back in a good place. Uh, last year, we took a bit of a hit because the membership didn't come back quite as much as we wanted it to. Um, we talked, uh, a lot here and with Bill about really taking a look at, you know, where, what we could do over at the center to increase those revenues. Uh, we did do a fee, uh, a fee rate increase during, uh, this fiscal year, uh, between that and a, a reduction of some of the other expenditures, we were able to get it close. In fact, I think our, uh, revenues are looking at about fifty thousand dollars this year over last year's budgeted amount. Um, but even at that, we'll be just a little bit short, if you look at the last one, about six thousand dollars, which again is close, it's better than, I think, where we were at last year, ninety? I think it was around ninety last year we had to use, so we're getting closer, and I know Bill is still working, we had some discussions on, uh, what, what we can do to get those revenues back in a good place to make sure that the center can fund itself into the future. So, we have taken action, we'll continue to do it, we're in a better place than we were, uh, last year with the recreation center. Any questions on that at all? Water sewer fund, go ahead.
I just have one quick question, how many more memberships does it take to make up six thousand dollars?
Oh, at...
Thirty times ten is three hundred, I know it's thirty-five bucks a month, right?
Thirty, we're up to thirty, thirty-eight, we were, it was thirty-five, we moved it up to thirty-eight, so...
Right, so forty times twelve, call it five hundred bucks, so, eight memberships?
Eight pe, eight humans, and you're even.
I need a computer.
We're, we're close, we've made, after losing four hundred members, uh, over the course of COVID, I think we've really made some good gains, we've, uh, reinvested into some marketing that's helped us, and, uh, I feel like we're in a, in a pretty good spot, moving positively right now. But, we're, we're close, and we made some really good gains at the, the start of this year, uh, through some specials and things that we're doing, but it's not, not a lot more members that we need to break even, we're, we'll keep working on that.
Are we all members?
You all have a free, you all have a free membership, all of our aldermen, uh, and the employees have a free membership.
Oh, fuck, I had no idea. Here, I was willing to pay.
We're probably locked in your orientation, yeah.
What, did we get that in our, like, orientation manual?
Right, yeah, what did you just say?
Don't tell him, uh, no, he doesn't like that machine.
Thank you, so we need, we need eight more humans.
Any other significant, uh, significant other or family member can also be an add-on to your account for a, uh, same rate that any other person would have an add-on, uh, in the city, but all of your memberships are free.
Thank you, awesome.
Thank you, Derek.
It's like, it's like a bonus.
No, I, um, the eight new members would be annual members, correct?
Correct.
It's, it's an annual commitment to get the dollars in. Um, I spoke briefly with...
It's actually like twenty, just a... It's actually like 20, just to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty?
Yeah. And I appreciate Director Hopson and I had a discussion, just regards to, yes, things dropped off with COVID, we're rising, maybe we were expecting a little bit more last year, but at least it is showing an increase, and we continue to go up to that, you know, up to a higher level, which is great, and just hopefully it'll keep growing. I do think that, I mean, over, over a period of time, we may be able to find unique ways of developing more revenues over there, I'm not a, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, just kind of thinking, because what we have over there is very unique, and we have a lot of different options, you know, individuals, different types of memberships, different, you know, yoga classes, different classes. So, as long as we continue to be creative, you know, because that's how you're going to make it, because that's, I mean, we're competing with dozens of other fitness centers, and we can't offer everything, but we've got to make sure that we have enough services, and maybe some unique services that do draw some people in, and it keeps them there, and it keeps them there to renew their annual members.
Our name is becoming much more known also for some of our banquet space, we're seeing that increase as well, just again, through some marketing efforts, but...
Yep, a revenue source.
Rent those back rooms that, I think all of you have been there for the back rooms, or our Christmas party, or whatever, but that's, it's been a space that we've really tried to capitalize upon as well, so we're doing all that we can do to maximize revenues.
Just to clarify for the record, it's not our goal to compete with private businesses in the City of McHenry, we offer unique services outside of the services that they provide. All right, Water and Sewer Fund, I'm not going to go through all these numbers, the key here is that a few years ago, of council members, we adjusted how we identify rates, so that we're not, we used to just say, well, we're just going to raise rates 3%, you know, just because other communities are doing 3% or 5%. We tied rates to what our actual operating costs of the water and sewer and utility funds are, and so, we analyze those every year during the budget process, and, and we bring those back to council. Over the last couple of years, we've done some reductions of rates, we've done some maintenance of rates, we've recommended some increases on rates, and again, those are not arbitrary, it's based on what our operating needs are, our operating costs are of the water sewer and utility division, divisions, and it's not just personnel costs, it's all the costs that are related to those, so contractual supplies and everything. So, this year, if you look towards the bottom or last half of the page, based on what the expenditures, proposed expenditures for the water division are, we are not recommending any water rate adjustment for 23, 24, based on what the operating costs of the sewer and utility divisions are, we are recommending a .17, or 4% sewer rate adjustment for 23 and 24. And then, just the last thing, the capital project snapshot, again, I'm not going to go through every, every one of these projects, that's included in the packet, if anybody that doesn't have a packet wants to look online and see it, basically, over the next couple of pages, it's all of the projects that we're able to fund, or recommending, recommending being funded in fiscal year 23, 24. Some of them, you'll see, I've identified either rebudgets, those may be projects that we didn't, either didn't get to, or didn't complete in this current fiscal year, so we make sure that we carry funds over for those projects in the next fiscal year, and other, also importantly, it does not include water and sewer capital projects, those are funded through the water and sewer base fees. So, those are the capital projects, anybody have questions on capital projects? Basically, those, we talked about all those back in January, when Troy did the presentation of the, of the community investment plan. The last thing I have for you, for some input on, for council, is this is a little bit new, for me at least, but I think, I mean, I'm recommending it, I don't think I'd have it on here if I wasn't recommending it, and Carolyn and I talked a little bit about it, this is where I crossed it out earlier on, on that page, this is kind of the updated version of that. So, we're looking at a, at an overall surplus, all said and told, in 22, 23, the current fiscal year, about $700,000. So, that means all of our other needs were met, that we wanted to achieve in 22, 23, capital projects aside, and this is money that we would typically transfer over into the capital projects fund, or offset other costs in 23, 24. So, what I'm recommending of that $700,000 is this, you don't have to give me a commitment tonight on it, we can talk about it, think on it, whatever you want to do, but my recommendation is to reserve $200,000 of that for the Route 31 project, so that would be added to the 3.68 million dollars that we have, to get us close to $4 million in the bank for Route 31, and to utilize the other $500,000 for what we'll call city council discretionary funds, so we can track that separately. Examples of what we could use that money for, and I know the projects that have come up over the last few weeks are, the first one is Riverwalk Phase 4, you all received some communications about that over the last couple of weeks, it's our intent as staff, we want to get Riverwalk Phase 4 behind bimbos in that area done as much as anybody else. Like, that's been a goal since I got here, but it's often one that we've not been able to fund, and it's really the last link in there of the Riverwalk. And when it came to this year, there were a few things that, that impacted us being able to do a project there. There's some electric that needs to be relocated behind one of the businesses that we are working with that business on, in terms of funding and timing and everything else, and so that needs to be done first. Secondly, there's some engineering that needs to be completed for that portion of the Riverwalk that we think will get here in the next 30 to 60 days, and with all of that, doing any work there, we want to have the least amount of disruption as possible to businesses in that area, and phase it as much as we can. And so, to say, even if we had a million five, which is what we're estimating that part of the Riverwalk is going to cost, even if we had that here today, we wouldn't recommend doing it, maybe first, because it would be disruptive, we're reliant on the electric being done, but would also be disruptive to those businesses in that area. And so, the first step of that really would take place in the fall of this year, and that would be most likely the seawall portion of it. Once the season's over with, people start to move back inside, they're not spending the time outside on patios, et cetera, and so, our goal would be to get the engineering done, get the electric done, which is already funded, and get the, based on the engineering cost, to be able to bid the project and come back to council and say, based on the bids, you know, let's do this phase of the project, let's do the, again, I'll use the seawall as the example, and what we can either use is discretionary funds, we can use, we have $200,000 that we've already budgeted for the seawall west of Green Street by Landmark School, we can transfer that money over and add these discretionary funds to it. So, just some money that we can use, again, to do a project like that, that we can't necessarily budget for now, because we don't really know what the costs are going to be for, but it's one that needs to be done. Another example that I'll throw out is Riverside Residences, we know it as McHenry Villa, that's now, it's been purchased and under new ownership over the last couple of years. We always talk about the opportunities for downtown parking, the eastern half of that lot has about 61 spaces in it, they don't have use for all those spaces. We talked to them about the potential for selling, and they would not, they would prefer not to do that, because they may want to, the developer owns that property, and they may want to develop that space into the future, into something else, and so, we said, okay, well, how about a lease on the property? So, what the proposal is, at least in concept, is $100,000 to, for the city to resurface the lot, and that would get us free use, I mean, it's costing us $100,000, but no additional cost for 20 months, and then we requested an additional 40 months of use, so five years of use of that lot, the additional 40 months would cost us $5,000 a month. So, basically, it's, if you take the $100,000 and the $5,000 a month, it's $5,000 a month for five years for 61 parking spots, so about 82 bucks a spot. So, it's actually not a bad deal for 61 parking spots right on the Riverwalk. Again, I don't have to have an answer tonight, it's just a project that's come up, that we've had some conversations on, and the potential is out there, and we could also get our first rate of refusal, by the way, if the owner ever wants to sell that property to do something there. So, that's my recommendation for kind of that surplus funding. Any, any idea, any thoughts on that, any of these projects, or just overall about the use of the surplus funds?
Real quick, on this, the Riverside residency, the 61 spaces is the total parking lot?
No, they...
So, we, no, we wouldn't be doing...
So, so, no, so the, the total parking lot, so it's like, it's like two-thirds, though, I don't have a map, it's like two-thirds, it's the eastern two-thirds of the lot. We would resurface that, we would basically barricade, it's too strong of a word, but we make sure it's separated from the villa's parking places, so that there's not crossover there.
Okay.
Because you know there's two entrances, there's one at the western end, and there's one at the eastern end of it.
Got it.
They need, they have need, and I think are required to have a certain amount of spots for them anyway, so we're not cutting into their needs or their required spots, we're just accessing and using their excess for public parking, and it would be signed and all that.
And just one comment I have on the Riverwalk Phase 4, we've had some discussions, and I appreciate staff filling in, and talking to, actually, concerned owners also, but the moving of the 200,000, okay, and you just, okay, thank you. But, I understand that 200,000, and we do have, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have 150,000 budgeted for utilities already, correct? That's, 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 okay, that's ready to go. I guess the seawall, and knowing that, and I don't want to put words in Administrator Moorefield or Director Hopson, we will, at some point, correct me if I'm wrong, by late April, we should know what revenues we could invest into that seawall, potentially late in the year, meaning late fall, early winter, water will recede at that time, make it a little bit easier to do, put in a seawall, plus, you eliminate causing any kind of noise, dust, or anything as you're constructing a seawall, where there is outside dining at, at the one restaurant. Does, does that make sense?
So, the way I see it going, Bill can add on here too, is, we'll get the engineering in, we'll, we'll bid the project, and we'll have some timeframe for when those will come in, and then we'll have some, we'll have a better idea of what the project costs will be, so that then we can, again, that'll have to come back before council anyway...
Sure.
To get approved, and then we can say, okay, well, based on where these are at, you know, we can, let's come up with the funding, or let's use some of these funds to do this portion of the project in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first phase, or the first step is for us to get that engineering back, that we'll have an opinion, an engineer's opinion of probable cost, once we have that, combined with the phase that we just did, we have, we'll have a really good idea of what, some actual costs and what we can accomplish, and then we can start that, really start that discussion in earnest at that point, this era, right? We have some really good ideas of what these costs are going to be. We, I don't anticipate us bidding it until we really figure out, here's what we think this is going to cost, here's what realistically we can take on, so that we know, we have the money that's real close to what we think we're going to, what we expect those bids to come back at. If it's way out of whack, then I think that a different discussion needs to happen, but that's, for me, that's how I see it going, once we get that engineering and an engineer's opinion of probable cost back.
Yeah, we wouldn't bid the whole project, the bids would get stale.
Sure, and just, but for the bidding for now, we're bidding utilities and seawall?
The utilities are not bid.
Okay.
Utilities, there's a portion, there's a portion that's through ComEd, that we, they have, they have done the design for, they will do the pole drop and, and get pole removal and transformer drop, and then there's a portion that, through the easement agreements, that the owner is responsible for, that he has to provide us three quotes, that it becomes reimbursable upon your approval of those three quotes that are presented to us.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the, it's a seawall bid, then?
The seawall would be the portion that we would bid.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, Paul and Strachan.
Hi.
I think as much investment as we've made in the downtown, as much as I love adding some more parking spaces, I do think finishing the Riverwalk is key. At the end of the day, if we can shuffle the 200 for west of the, of Green Street, and use some of the funds that we have available to at least get the seawall done, it makes more sense for us to get that big bite of that infrastructure taken care of. I know that in conversations with Troy, there's some engineering work that's got to happen underneath the second bridge, getting all of that shored up and ready to go, it seems like the smartest move when Miller Point's going to be getting to that stage of a lot more use, it's going to free up some available parking in other areas, because people will be able to utilize the Riverwalk at its fullest. So, I think that, for me, that makes the most sense, for sure. Thank you.
And HR Green will be looking at that engine that needs to happen under the bridge, that's included within this phase of the Riverwalk, so it's, it's rolled into there as well.
Alderman Miller?
I agree with Alderman Strach, that we need to focus on the Riverwalk, we're almost there, like, let's get over the goal line there, so I think that is important. However, the opportunity of 61 spaces is also very attractive, because it's within walking distance of the Riverwalk, which is going to connect the dots. So, I wouldn't want to miss the opportunity, at this reasonable rate, to invest with an owner in exchange for use, if we can work it out. I mean, obviously, this was his first offer, have you negotiated?
Yeah, we talked to him a little bit, so, what I would say is, let's see where the Riverwalk stuff comes in at, I don't know why everybody just went blank, but let's see where the Riverwalk costs come in at, and, and then we can use that as another decision point for this, or something else that council wants to do. But, I mean, we're under no timeframe with him, it's been a conversation right now, we started it just to see if he was even interested in selling or leasing the spaces, he was receptive and came back with some concept, we want that, the original wasn't for five years, because he's concerned about being able to develop that when he wants to develop it. And I said, well, you know, we understand that, but if there's an out, like, if you have 60, like, how, it's 60 or 90 day out in a, in a lease agreement, like, all we do is pick our signs up and leave, like, if you, if you have somebody that wants to develop it, you just tell us you have 90 days and you can't use it anymore, and we're out. I mean, that's, you know, it's, that can be built into it to alleviate his concerns, but at least 20, we want some, some minimum amount of time to get our investment back, but he's also receptive of going beyond, and giving us that first rate of refusal on purchase if he ever decides to sell it.
I think this last weekend, you know, kudos for the success, but I think it taught me a lot about people's willingness to park and mobilize to get to an event, having the event signs, and not that this is about the event, but normally, people's behavior are, I want to be within a block of where I'm heading, and this weekend certainly identified to me that having location identification, people were willing to park wherever they could, and get to where they were going to go. So, strategically, that lot is, you know, smack dab walkable to Miller Point, and I think once Miller Point is fully developed, along with the Riverwalk, we are going to have a parking problem, because there's not a lot of parking to get to Miller Point. So, this could be literally, what, 400, 500 feet from the bridge, and you're right there. So, I, I don't, I want Riverwalk first, Miller Point, of course, we already have a plan, but I don't want this to get away.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we won't run out and do anything tomorrow, any of this stuff, so.
I parked at the high school all week.
Sure. But, kind of the last thing on my list here is, this is looking out into the future, I mean, we know that there's a potential dispensary coming into town, and the revenues on that, we have 3% off the sales there, and we're estimating, again, conservatively, between 600 and 800,000 dollars a year, and revenues that are not built into this budget at all, if in fact, or when it opens, if and when that dispensary opens here in town, and, you know, if I can make a recommendation now, again, it won't affect anybody until the next budget year, but I would at least recommend, you know, you, we've talked a lot about downtown streetscape improvements, or Recreation Center expansion, and how, you know, to facilitate that, you know, set those funds aside, and pick one or both of those projects to set that money aside for in the future, so that we know once it starts coming in, we set it aside, we use it just for streetscape bond, or we use it just for a rec center expansion bond, or both, again, maybe enough comes in that we can do both of those with it, and just have a dedicated revenue source from something like a dispensary, that's, that was a neutral comment, by the way, like a dispensary that can be, that can go into some public... Like a dispensary that can be, that can go into some public good, either through downtown, downtown streetscape project, or the recreation center, instead of just going into our general fund dollars. Council can always change that at some point in the future, just like with our utility taxes, if things got lean, they could change that also and use it for operating dollars. But I think it's just good practice to publicly say and make a decision that we're going to use certain funds just for certain things. So again, it won't affect anything now, it's just a recommendation going into the future when that opens up.
Ministerator, uh, Moorefield, as far as the revenue that could be generated from that, I would suggest instead of the rec center that we might look at something to the concrete program I was talking about. You go around town and you take a look at a lot of sidewalks, a lot of aprons and everything else, you know. We need to get back on track of getting everybody, as far as homeowners and everything else, wanting to invest in their properties. Well, if we don't invest into the infrastructure in those neighborhoods, how can we ask them to invest into their properties? On second note, if you are taking any of this type of revenue and moving it to the rec center, then you are actually going against what the residents took years back, when we ran a referendum, an advisory referendum, of whether or not to build a rec center and whether they wanted to pay for it. And if these revenues that are generated by a dispensary go to the rec center, then it's other dollars that we could wind up eventually raising our property taxes within the city, that we have been so proud of keeping a flat tax. And if we use this for the rec center, then we are actually going against what the residents originally wanted for the rec center in that respect. They didn't want to see it be, be built with their, their tax dollars. And, um, we have so far been able to do it with just the, paying off the bonds, you know, with, with the uses, that are gen, or the money that's generated from the use of the, the center. So all I'm saying is, is we should be looking at moving all this money to the rec center.
Right.
Just to, just to, how would you say, get the rec center to expand, you know. A conscious decision by council years back that we would not use dollars, that it would be self-sufficient as far as the rec center, and it would not impact the dollar amounts to the residents.
Thanks. So in terms, I just, because I want to respond to that, I think in terms of the concrete program, that's something that we can either build in. Troy, will we identify it as a new project or maintenance and replacement?
Uh, we identified it as maintenance and replacement, we also identified it as a program that we currently didn't really, couldn't fund.
Okay.
So there was, uh, the worst one percent for both curb and sidewalk, with each cost roughly three-hundred thousand dollars per year. Uh, we put those options on the table and they weren't, they weren't funded at the time when we adopted the taxes.
Right. All right. Um, and from a rec center standpoint, I mean, I know there was some talk in recent council meetings about wanting to expand the recreation center, and I guess there's only two ways to do it. Either you're going to run another referendum and ask the public if they want to expand the recreation center, or you find another way to fund it. And this, this was just put out there as another way to fund it. I mean, if there's, if, that's, if you have revenues that are not property tax revenues, that are sales tax, basically it's a sales tax revenue, that we just dedicate to that expansion, and we don't have to increase taxes of the residents, we're just utilizing specific funding to do it, then I, I don't, I don't know why that's a bad thing, it's just my-
Now, the conscious effort was made that the, um, the rec center would be self-sufficient.
Which is- The existing recreation center?
I'm sorry?
The existing facility be self-sufficient, yeah, it didn't talk about an expansion.
No, 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 expansions. We, we talked about all three phases of the, of the rec center, and we weren't moving forward after that referendum until we could figure out how we would take and build it with the developer donations, and then the, uh, the bonds being paid off by the users. And that was the whole game plan. It was not, it was supposed to be totally self-sufficient and, and not additional revenues being brought to it. I mean, these revenues, if, if, if they went into a general fund, maybe we'd have even a, a chance to reduce our property taxes. But, so, you know, I'm just saying, uh, but if you're taking it to the rec center, then you're, you're really going against what was originally done. If we wanted to do another referendum, that would be fine, I wouldn't have a problem with that. If, if, uh, after this first phase was built, and the public wants to go forward with, uh, with the rec center, that's one thing. But if they, the last time we ran a referendum, said no, why would we go forward?
Thanks, council. All right.
Hold on, Miller?
I just, not to belabor the point, I just have a question about the rec center. Um, I think it was built prior to me being involved. So at what point, or what phase, if it was a three-phase project, thank you, Andy, for the history, phase one is what we see? Is that phase one?
Yes.
At what point would an Aqua Center come into play? Is that phase two or phase three?
My recommendation, the way to proceed, I guess, is really, we, as a Parks Department, are in need of updating our master plan. Our master plan, then, um, when we did this back in two thousand and five with our master plan, planning, we went to the community and we asked for some community involvement in what they would like to see both on the site or in the facility. I, that's due for an update, uh, we need, we are, let's just, and so going back to them and say, what would you like to see? When we proposed it with the referendum last time, we included all aspects to say, all right, some people want this, some people want the indoor pool, some people want the outdoor pool, some people want the gymnasium. And so that's why we said, all right, let's just propose it all at that point and see where it lands. And it, it did prove to be a, a bigger task. Obviously, there's the conditions of going up against the high school referendum, it was as, much less than ideal. Recreation versus education is a, is a tough, a tough thing to choose from, and I think, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't blame anybody to, to choose the education over recreation. But I think we're in that point to maybe ask that question again, starting with a master plan, then we go back to the public and say, what would you like to see included in this facility? And we could then also ask, would, you know, we could ask during that, we wouldn't ask everybody at that point, you know, would you be supportive of us running a referendum? Um, we've, we've done that before, but ultimately, like Alderman Glab said, we can come up with a plan, present it to council. Obviously, our, our pool is not getting any younger, it's nineteen, it's a nineteen-eighty-three pool, that, we just replaced the pump and a heater for forty thousand dollars plus. We're going to have to address that at some point, and so maybe it's the, maybe it's the aquatic center, maybe it's a gymnasium.
What's your plan on doing that survey? Soon?
Soon.
This upcoming year?
Yes.
And is that a, that's obviously done internally, you're just run that and-
We actually hire somebody to do our master plan.
Okay. Is that in your budget?
It is in, it is a budget number that we've set aside-
Perfect.
-to be able to do that, including the identification of what a rec center element might be.
Perfect. I, I just think the landscape has changed out there. You know, with Health Bridge and Crystal Lake closing, the Y is struggling to stay up and running with their pools. And I think it would be, you know, not something that needs to be done tomorrow, but we have a lot of residents that head to Crystal Lake for their health and fitness needs because of the additional opportunities. So, um, again, to Derek's point, we're not here to compete with private enterprise, but if we can offer a better quality life and allow people to live the life they want home, I think that's a good way to start looking at unfounded or unbudgeted for money. Thank you.
Bill and Derek and I have talked over the last few months, that, you know, I'm totally in favor of asking the public for a referendum. I mean, to, to just move forward, let's, let's try to get some more amenities over in that rec center. So I'm, I'm in huge favor of that, so, but, we'll, uh, see what comes of that at a later date, for sure.
Yeah, and that's, and that's just where I hope that master plan can help with that roadmap of what actually are we asking for? And what's, what's realistic that our community might be willing to support.
Mayor, go ahead.
Yes.
All I could say is, is I would like to see the rec center move forward, but again, as long as the public is, is willing to pay for it, I have no problem with it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, any other questions for Derek? We'll come back, uh, we'll come back with the full, with the rest of the funds on April third. That's usually like a ten-slide presentation, review any changes that may come out of this one, as we look at the numbers again or whatever, any significant changes? And then, uh, and then we'll come back at the second meeting of April with the full budget for council consideration and approval. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to say, go ahead, Alderman Strach, go ahead, your turn.
I just wanted to thank the directors for being so fiscally conservative over these years, for Derek and Caroline for all of the work in getting all of this together. And it, it takes a big group of people to be able to put this many dollars on paper and get it figured out, and thank you for that. So just wanted to throw that out there.
A second there. So, thank you all very much. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, is staff reports, is there any other staff reports by the staff that, go ahead, Bill?
I, I just wanted to thank you all, I thank you all for the support, a number of you volunteered, but for this weekend's efforts, not, not only you, but our departments, our police department, our public works, most of all, my department, my guys, I, I don't want to name them again, there's only six of them, and they, the, the work that they put in over the weekend. You know, Pat Gorniak leading, Jeff Friedel, our assistant superintendent, was there all weekend long. But then you have Chris Atten, Chris Van Landen, John Dillon, Bob Zimmerman, and Tracy Crowder. They, they really, like, the park and the decorations throughout downtown, um, the atmosphere that they continue to create, I'm proud to work with them. And I say with them because they, they certainly are outstanding. But the turnout that we had around town was phenomenal to see, even with frigid weathers, frigid weather conditions. I just, from our end, it's, it was just a great event. I'm hoping to get some more numbers to you, or at least, at least a recap, including, I'm going to reach out to naturally McHenry County, the tourism aspect. The last, they've been able to do some cell phone tracking and at least say, this is who was at Miller Point, this is where they came from. It's been very interesting to see, I have that data from the last four year, or the four years that we've run it. And so it's, uh, it was just, it was a great event, but it was kind of all hands on deck, and so I, I think our town really came through shining this last weekend. And then the other thing, we didn't waste any time at all, since we took down all those decorations and tents and everything today, if you've been down at Miller Point, you have seen all, all the construction fencing is up, the silt fencing is in, some of the trees came down already. The excavation will start to happen tomorrow for the McHenry Riverwalk shops, so that construction project is, is full speed ahead. There's no, literally no, no time that we wasted at all. So, again, thank you all, and looking forward to this construction project.
Thank you. So while we're on that, I want to congratulate everyone, Parks Department, the Police Department, the whole city, uh, thank you to all the council members that went out and helped, I don't know why I saw them only in the beer lines or the beer tickets. Um, but, you know, thank you all for doing your part. And, uh, you know, talking to a lot of businesses, I mean, a lot of them were at capacity, it's amazing, you know, there's a lot of places that scan IDs, especially in an event like that. Forty percent of several places was out of town, you know, which is, is big. I mean, you're pumping probably three-quarter million dollars into the city of McHenry in a, a weekend, is pretty remarkable. So, um, just hearing people talk, and like, you know, I came from Mundeline, I came, that's, that's what we want. So, um, you know, congratulations to everyone that was involved, that's definitely a, a huge party for the city of McHenry, to say the least, but definitely, uh, and it, and it went off well.
Yeah.
Even I recall-
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Rob from, uh, Rob Hardman, owner of Blarney Island, that's, that partnership. We, we laughed and joked a little bit about it this weekend, when you take an out-of-town business and you bring them in, I mean, they don't reap benefits, but there's some competition against our own businesses, and there was a trust factor that had to happen there. I think we've established that trust with our businesses through, and through the partnership with Rob, it's been, it really has been great, so thank you to him as well.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say that, uh, I thought it was remarkable how many people came out when it was twenty-two degrees. Kids with snow suits on and everything else, uh, it was just amazing. Uh, and, but one thing that I wanted to bring up, uh, that I really thought that, uh, could have really highlighted, that the whole Green Street atmosphere, is maybe we look at dying Boom Lagoon as well.
We did.
Yeah. So it was done.
When?
All the way up-
Saturday.
Well-
That was actually the brightest.
You know, you know what, I mean, uh, it must have dissipated real quick because of how fast that was moving out, out to the river, because-
It's fading the creek a lot faster.
You saw how, you saw how dark green it was, uh, out there on the river, and, uh, there was nothing on Boom Creek, uh, that way. So, I don't know, maybe there's a way of keeping it going, I, I don't know. Like I said, when I looked at it later, you know, during the parade, it just didn't seem like much of, of that there. But yet, you, if you looked all the way out by the river, you could see it real dark and green. So I don't know, maybe there's a way of keeping it from dissipating that quickly.
Sure.
Just that I bring it up.
I'm glad you go on.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, the reason Chicago stays green so long, they don't have a current in that river, so, uh, I, I know what you're saying, but I don't think there's a whole lot we can do. And as long as we're throwing roses and flowers, but, Director Hobson, he did a great job, and, uh, you know, I, I echo everybody's thoughts here, along with Chief Burke and all the officers. He had a really good presence out there, and from what I heard, there's no incidents at all.
Thank you, sir, yeah, it was a, it was a nice weekend, everyone behaved themselves, I just, uh, I'll pass your compliments along to our staff, they do a great job. I, I want to thank Troy's staff for helping us with the no parking law on the parade route and those issues, but Bill's staff is always, always great to work with for the Police Department.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, I was really impressed, and sort of a lot of people from out of town who ever said that, they were really impressed on how everything went down, so.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, on another topic, uh, the splash pad is just all over at Port McHenry, the parking surface is in there, when can we expect to see it striped and everything else?
We're just waiting for the weather. The other, the other improvements that will happen that are already scheduled for, like, the first part of April, I will, you know, Troy, and it's working guys to make a couple improvements mechanically, that's been a huge help. But we're also going to be adding concrete around a portion of the splash pad, including a fence around the splash pad, so that it's safe for all the kids. When that happens, we'll also be looking to stripe in that parking lot. So when the weather turns a little warmer, we'll be out there, um-
And, and you'll re-stripe the entire lot, that might be, right, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe, maybe, I don't know how many spaces we added, but-
Doubled it, it was, we probably added, I don't know, forty?
I was going to say forty-five or something like that.
Wonder if we should be looking at possibly putting no parking on the, on the street for a while and see how that works out. Again, one of my biggest reservations was kids running in between the, the cars out there, you know, across, across the Royal, Front Royal there.
Yeah. Yeah, just a reminder on that lot, that was done completely with donations, you know, Randy was here this night, uh, tonight, but-
Right.
LeFarge donated all the stone, and pet paving did all, donated all the paving for us. The only thing we had to pay for was a little bit of curb work, but McHenry Excavating excavated that, so the, that whole, that whole expansion for the parking lot was done through donations, which was amazing.
And again, uh, more than anything else, maybe, maybe through this summer, we monitor it, uh, and just see, I mean, if, if the parking can be eliminated on Front Royal, it'd be great. I mean, if it can't, it can't, you know, but, because if they, if we eliminate it right by the park, then they're just going to move it a little further down, and you still have the same problem, so. But maybe we could just monitor it, uh, for next year.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right. Any other city council?
Any other city council comments, since we're on it?
I don't know if this has ever come up before, but you have to pay for air, and now you're using credit cards to pay for air at gas stations, David, is there something we can do, pass an ordinance?
To-
To, yeah, so it's free, free air, 'cause to me, it's, it's, it can be hazardous, if they don't have the money or whatever to get air, they're going down the street with, you know, fully-
So you're gonna require a private company to supply their products free?
Well, it's not a product, it's free, it's air.
Yeah, but cost might operate on.
I know, a lot of them still have the vacuum, I pay for that, but air, I just don't, I don't get it. Can you look to see if any other municipalities have looked into that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other city council comments? No? Alright, we're gonna be going into executive session for property acquisition, I would ask that, the general public, please exit to your left, and we appreciate you coming, and I would ask that, make a motion to enter executive session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman McClatchy is second.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Martin?
Yes.
Alderman Strachey?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?